But if you want to, if you want to.
Give me some info or something?
I'll give, I'll bring you some stuff. It's a good way to give back to.
Yeah.
Something that gave all of us. Yeah.
Okay, let's call a meeting to order for Market Talents of Planning Commission, May tenth, twenty twenty-three at seven oh three. And we'll do the roll call.
Stephen Aiken at Lake Enchantment.
Dennis Farro, Eagles Nest Road.
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Linda Winslow, Norwood Street, Marquette Township.
Eric Powers, That Flare.
Approval of the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Minutes from previous meeting of May tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Move to approve previous minute of prior meeting of May tenth, twenty twenty-three. Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, any public comment from either of your gentlemen right now before we get into the agenda items? Okay.
Don't move.
Just bystanders.
That sounds right in my eyes if you move your hand.
That's from off the top of my head.
No, no.
And I take it Jason's not coming tonight?
Nope.
Okay. All right, six A, special use permit public hearing request for proposed short-term rental unit to be located at seven ten County Road five fifty in Marquette, within the rural residential district. Parcel tax ID number is five two zero eight one three two zero two one zero zero. The applicant is Paul Favo, PO Box one seventy-five, Big Bay, Michigan. Eric.
Yep, so we have received a complete application, special land use application for a short-term rental at seven one zero County Road five fifty, that lies within the rural residential zoning district. You can see the subject parcel up on the screen there. Included in your packet tonight is the full application, including site plan, surveys, legal descriptions, everything else. So staff would recommend scheduling the public hearing for Wednesday, June fourteen at seven PM.
And would we be able to get, I think I, I think it was you I talked to, not Jason, but a listing of all the short-term rentals we've approved right now and their addresses, just so we kind of know where everything is? And if they're other in the areas or?
Yeah, I apologize for not having that ready for this meeting, but I can make sure it's updated with the recent ones that have either been approved or denied. I think they've all been approved recently.
Okay.
And I can send that out.
All right.
And the applicant is here if you do have any questions.
Okay.
Of me or him, so.
Mr. Pat. Are you Mr. Pat?
Yes.
Yeah, so this isn't your first rodeo. You have renters up in Big Bay as well?
Yes, I do.
Who, who takes care of the maintenance of your short-term rentals? Do you do that yourself?
I do, yes.
Is this a parcel here?
I guess it is in red.
Okay. I can't see a structure on there.
Oh, it's very hard to see. Right, okay. Your trees are like right over.
And you have your own well of septic system and it's not shared with anyone else or?
Correct.
Okay.
The building was completely brought up to code today's standards, codes. The whole place.
Okay. Just recently or?
And included in your packet is some of that permit information from the county. The permits that were pulled, bringing up to code.
Yeah, I see the electrical permit is in here, but I don't see that the permit was approved or any fees were paid. Do you have an actual?
Well, actually, they do have, Jason has copies of it.
Yeah, we must have the permit that you applied with, but not approved.
It does not get, I have temporary occupancy right now.
Okay.
I needed to get the deck on it.
No, I was talking about the electrical permit.
Oh, electrical, oh yeah, that was all, yeah, that was all approved.
We can, sorry to interrupt, we can certainly make sure that any record of approved permits is included in the public hearing packet.
Mr. Pat, just in terms of like familiar landmarks, whereabouts is seven ten?
Do you know where the Lindbergh quarry is?
Yes.
Rock quarry?
Yes.
It is directly across the street.
Sure, okay.
And then my property puts up to the old Saloon Trail, which used to be Snuggies. And the old Saloon Trail goes back and there's some big beautiful homes right back behind my property.
Any old stills back there?
There may be.
Eric, how many do we have on that date? This isn't the first one. Do we have the other two?
I think, yep, we've got the other two that we approved last meeting. And then assuming you also approve the one next on your agenda, that would make four public hearings.
And they're all short-term rentals?
Uh.
No.
Three short-term rentals and the daycare.
Site plan.
Site plan, yep.
Won't make us too busy, right?
What about four? So I had rumors that that might be coming up here.
Yep, I, I'll, we've got that on the agenda. I can give more information about that. But the public hearing for that, which is set by staff, will be the second June meeting, which I believe is the twenty-fourth, twenty-eighth. So, yep, that's coming right around the corner, but that is not on the June fourteen.
Okay. I don't see any problem with scheduling a public hearing. Everything looks in order and? Anyone wants to make a motion?
I move to schedule a public hearing for the short-term rental unit in seven ten County Road five fifty as described in item six A of today's agenda.
On June fourteen?
On June fourteen, I'm sorry, yes, thank you.
I'll second Pat.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we're all set for June fourteen?
Is that meeting held here?
Yep.
Yes.
I should be here for that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Probably not a bad idea.
Not, I tell everybody not mandatory, but we do advise it, that you're present for both meetings, so.
What, what time will that be?
Seven o'clock.
Same thing?
Yep. May, it might not be right on the nose at seven like this one is, since we do have three other public hearings that night, so you might be second, third, or fourth, but the meeting will start at seven. And I can follow up either tomorrow or next week with some more information for you before that.
How, just out of curiosity, I thought there had to be a thirty-day window. I mean, this, today's the twenty-fourth, right? Why wouldn't it be on the fourteenth?
I don't think it's thirty days.
Fifteen for a public hearing.
Fifteen for a public hearing.
That's it?
So these will go out, letters will go out tomorrow. To make sure we meet that deadline.
Okay, six B, special use permit public hearing request for a proposed daycare center to be located at six fifty Commerce Drive in Marquette, within the Zone Development District. Parcel tax ID numbers five two zero eight four five zero 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 seven zero zero. Applicant David and Jennifer Hayes, forty-nine ninety-six, Danforth Road in Nescanaba. Eric?
Yep, so staff has received a application for a special land use to conduct a daycare center at the mentioned location, six five zero Commerce Drive, which is within the Development District. As I just said, any daycare center land use is a special land use, so it needs that approval. Assuming it is approved at the suggested public hearing date, immediately following that public hearing at the same meeting, we would hold a site, the site plan review portion, because that's also needed as part of this. So kind of two components going on, but this is strictly for the special use permit public hearing. And staff would recommend scheduling that for Wednesday, June fourteen at seven PM.
Will the site plan review be a part of that or will be two separate agenda items?
It'll be two separate agenda items, but again, it'll, assuming it's approved, it'll happen back to back.
Good size of daycare, ninety-eight children.
Yep, and the site plan is included in your packet tonight. And we will have, we have full-size sets available and I'll have a full-size set available at that meeting on the table over here should you want to review it.
So this is, this is right on the road here?
Yep.
This way?
Yep.
First one, you're going to come in on the right.
For the first one before the building here on the, on the right inside?
Nope, before the first building there.
Straight across, the pond that you see on the left side there is that pond on the kind of westwood, or the mall property?
Okay.
And so it's straight across from that pond.
Okay.
And the only reason this triggers a special use permit requirement is due to its proximity to a residential land use. Since it's adjacent to that, you can see one right there, but then the parcel to the south there that it kind of butts up against, those are both residential. So due to that, it triggers a special use permit requirement.
What's the narrow strip right there?
It is undeveloped right of way. The, well.
Undeveloped right of way that ends before Commerce Drive, so it doesn't go through that parcel?
Does not go through the parcel, no.
Badger Street comes from the east to the west, up short, and it, it must be like an alley or something.
I think it's.
Undeveloped street?
I, I want to backtrack on saying it's undeveloped right of way, because I'm pretty sure that's kind of the, call it the south extension of Ryan's Alley.
Yeah.
Which is up in like Curran's property over here. So I'm not sure, that thicker, this thicker part is undeveloped right of way owned by the county, and I assume the county would own that too, but.
However, however, towards the east-west.
This one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
There, there are quite a bit of woods and trees in between that and that house.
Yeah, along the, the back.
Yeah, a lot of victory and it kind of goes up like over there.
Yeah, and we're following buffer yard. And we'll be able to discuss that next. But we do have, we submitted the site plan, completely, everything, fifteen, sixteen days, well, the thirty-day for the site plan, and we also requested a special use of that. The Hazens would have been here, but I, I told them not at this meeting. I said, you need to be prepared when the public's here to have that. And based on the last meeting, it sounds like we need daycare bad, so they said, now's the time to move.
Yeah.
Any idea how many staff are going to be hiring?
They staff with, they have a total of sixteen staff during the day that kind of expands during the day and then contracts near the end of the day, but maybe part of the day is there.
It's based on, it's, the staffing is based on the age of the children?
Yeah, so there must be a lot of infants.
Yeah, there's, yeah, it's all like toddlers and younger children. They own six different daycares of this style through the UP right now. They've just been looking to get in the Marquette area. So they got a lot of history on there.
Who regulates that? Is there a department?
The state.
The state does. They're all licensed with the state and everything. And they'll be able to explain their, their process and, you know, they're pretty detailed when they first talk to me. That's pretty impressive.
We need it to be open till midnight. We have shift work people in our community.
Well, that might be a good recommendation to them. I think the problem is getting people to actually work, you know, spend so much.
They work. Those people work. Well, we can certainly, I can certainly imagine that being surprised. So it's, meets all the requirements? So I'll make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for the proposed daycare center to be located at six fifty Commerce Drive, right across from the fire department. Is that correct?
Not right across.
Close enough?
Close enough.
Close enough? And all those other numbers? How's that, Eric?
Just get a, just get a date for me in that motion.
Well, you want it to be on June fourteenth?
Yep.
Okay, and that's enough time to do it tomorrow, right?
Yep.
You guys are all set? Okay.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We're all set for on the fourteenth with that one. All right, coming on the fourteenth.
Thank you for your time, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome. All right, solar energy systems, proposed ordinance amendments, continued discussion, Eric?
Yep, so in your packet tonight, I do have a updated staff report. Much of it remains the same from the previous ones you've seen. And then also I include Article sixteen, which is where the bulk of the proposal language lies. I did hand out just before the meeting started, a page from that, what is it? Article, is it? Article fifteen, which is the use table nomograph, or the use zoning district nomograph. And on that, backside of that highlighted in yellow, you will see what we are proposing as far as the approval requirements for different types of solar energy uses. Nothing has changed there since you previously saw this. I just wanted to kind of refresh everybody's memory as that's kind of the, the bulk of what we're doing or what we're aiming to do with this. Some of the changes that we have made after consulting with industry and policy people more on this since that last meeting would be how we are, I guess, defining the size and capacity of systems. Previously, we had kilowatt, kilowatts in there production-wise. And Brad Newman with Michigan State Extension said that he doesn't really know of any small systems that are, or any systems that are ten kilowatt or under. So in talking with people from Peninsula Solar, they suggested that we use amps instead. So for example, I'm gonna hopefully recall this correctly. They stated like with the BLPs installation on Wright Street, that's like a thousand amp system. So obviously that's utility grade. And when we're talking about somebody putting rooftop solar in or a small ground-mounted system, it's going to be eight hundred or under. So that's the number that we got from Peninsula Solar, and so that's kind of what we're working with as far as our cutoff is that eight hundred amp mark.
And there's no, there's no top limit of the principal use? Is eight hundred amps or more?
Yep. In addition to that, we added land use intensity designations to ground-mounted systems in the event. So again, say we've got a proposal for a large installation like BLPs on Wright Street. And so by adding a land use designation to that, and we designate it as a five, which is the highest in our land use designation or land use intensity designations, by putting that basically anywhere triggers screening requirements to neighboring properties. So say it's a vacant parcel in the middle of a rural residentially zoned area, and applicants go through the special use permit process, it gets approved, it gets put in, and now we've got residential land users that are complaining about ICE orders or whatever else they may complain about. The, the, the land use intensity designation will trigger those screening requirements that already exist in our zoning ordinance.
Are you talking about the, the solar energy systems?
Yep.
You have no land use intensity listed?
Not on here, no. That would be found in Article nineteen, performance requirements, which is also another table in our zoning ordinance, so similar looking. But that's where we found the land use intensity.
But you listed for the wind energy systems?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Oh.
Oh yeah, I see what you're saying now. So yeah, so under large principal use, solar energy systems, under LUI, that would be a five, correct? Yep.
Okay, so and then the accessory use is, is up to how many amps of service?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred? I have a good-sized home in, I have two hundred amp service in there with power to spare. What, what residential homeowner uses eight hundred amp service?
Likely none.
I would guess likely none. My God, the solar energy system, the, the panels, it would have to generate eight hundred amps of service would be stunningly big. So you're sure that, and, and that anybody could put that in there without any special use?
Keep in mind that they, any applicant is going to have to go through some pretty strict requirements as far as the electrical permit goes from the county.
No, I'm just, I'm just talking about the visual impact of an eight hundred amp solar energy system. I mean, it's gotta be huge. It's gotta be huge. So I mean, I, I, I'm just curious about the limit, that eight hundred amp service. That's, that seems stunningly big to me.
How, how is that, again, I know you just explained it, but can you explain it again? How was that arrived at, that, that number?
Because the, previously what we had in there.
Was kilo.
Was kilowatts. Or we were also discussing like square footage size or limitations or things like that. And both of those were kind of, in talking with people, kind of tossed out the window as being irrelevant or not a great way to measure the size of a system, being that as technology changes, they're going to shrink and their production capacity is going to keep going, growing. So the amps was suggested as a way, a more appropriate way to measure the size.
Conversion from the kilowatts that were originally? So we got this basically from the Marquette City ordinance, correct? A lot of it, right?
Uh, some of the language, yeah.
Yeah.
And then from there, we've refined it with industry people from Peninsula Solar and a couple other companies, and then Brad Newman from Michigan State Extension. And then we've clarified it from there to take things out that aren't working in the city or clarifying things.
But to, to answer Steve's question, is the eight hundred amp factor or number the equivalent of what the prior designation was in kilowatts?
Roughly, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I, I would ask that you just check on that.
Okay.
Just, just for my curiosity, you know, just, maybe just ask the, the solar boys that you're dealing with, how big is an eight hundred amps system? You know, it's not going to sit on a roof. I can guarantee you that. I mean, it's going to be massive. That's a lot of power.
Is that what Northern does?
Depends on storage too, right?
And, and like not, not to.
But the, but the thing's got to generate.
It's going to get smaller.
Not to oversimplify it, but amps can be compared to like in a water system, the flow of the water. As, as compared to kilowatts, which is like the production potential.
Okay.
So I, I agree with you.
I could be mixing metaphors here, but I'm just, it just seems for the waters to make that.
Well, isn't, when, when I'm reading this, on number four here on page forty, and it says eight hundred amps are over operated by a public utility government entity or on sec business only. But then if you go back and look at thirty-nine, principal use for generating less than eight hundred amps. And the ground-mounted is also less than, so it's the, the smaller ones are less than eight hundred amps and the bigger one is over eight hundred amps.
Right.
Is that what this is saying?
Yep.
Okay, so if it's residential, it's under eight hundred?
I guarantee it.
But I see what, I see what you're saying, Steve, because it can be up to eight hundred.
Your breaker box, you know, I have a huge breaker box and it's a two hundred amp service.
Yep.
And the cables coming in there are like this big.
Oh, so you're saying how would, how would it ever get up to eight hundred? Okay.
Yeah.
I got you.
How big a system would it have to be to generate that kind of power? Okay, other than that.
But no, I, I can certainly look into that and clarify it. And then, did I have any other? The only other thing that we clarified.
I said, I thought a thousand, a thousand watts is a half.
The only other thing that I clarified would be under three B, so under the ground-mounted solar energy systems, the height.
Thousand watts, ten, twenty amps.
We were, again, tossing around how we wanted to define that. And eighteen feet is the maximum permitted height for accessory structures basically in any district. So that eighteen feet number, we landed at.
If we put something outside this building, it can't be higher than eighteen feet.
If it's ground-mounted.
If it's ground-mounted.
Well, that's.
And if it's on roof-mounted?
It won't be roof-mounted.
Roof-mounted.
It can't be more than three feet above the surface of the roof.
And with the roof-mounted systems, kind of talking more about that changing technology, I think they're getting more and more to the point where they're being flush with the roof rather than.
Oh, they're in the shing, I think they're in the shingle.
Right.
Yeah. If there's, there's a far way to go with all this and by the time they're done, we'll see, we'll see. Natural gases still.
So it, it won't matter how high the, if it's two or three-story roof? It's three feet above that?
As long as they're stayed within the three feet, you know? So yeah, there might be a little, when we're talking about, like in the urban residential district for a residential dwelling, the max height permitted is thirty feet. So say you got a thirty-foot structure in there in, somewhere in Trowbridge, and they propose solar panels. We might be playing with the, you get three feet above the thirty-three, but we're keeping it within that three feet.
So regardless of Steve's concern, I mean, in consideration of Steve's concern about an eight hundred amp system being for the accessory use, which is the regular homeowner use, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If there's a limit on the size, is there a limit on the size of the solar panels already in this ordinance?
I don't know if I understand what you're asking.
Well, I mean, he's concerned about unsightly gigantic panels.
Right.
But is there a limit, what I'm asking you is, is there already a limitation in terms of size and mounting in this that would necessarily obviate that concern? In other words, you know, no matter what, if it's eight hundred amps, it doesn't matter because we have already a limit on the size and the way it can be installed.
We've got height limits and we have language in here that says that any installation must conform to the existing setbacks of the district. So it's not like somebody could put, come in and put it right on the property line. They've got to conform to the set, existing setbacks.
So it's three.
Satisfy your concern?
It's three B.
As long as nobody's putting up one next to my house.
Well, what about, don't you think maybe we, we should consider the square footage of all the panels together and put a limit on that?
I guess what they're saying is that technology changes so fast, you know, it's just.
It's going to become obsolete pretty quick.
Yeah, but I, like, like I said.
They're not going to get bigger, they'd only get smaller.
Smaller or like thinner, maybe sheets on your roof, you know?
So I mean, can somebody put twenty panels up in their yard right now? There's no limitation on it, so you could then, right?
But what are you generating that, I mean, Steve's right, you know, most of us maybe have two hundred amp services in our house.
It's a lot of power, must be going to be.
Is there a sellback? Is there a buyback here?
I don't know if there still is.
I thought it was, I thought it expired.
I don't know. I haven't.
I think it probably just spins your meter back.
Oh, my gosh.
I think it maybe just spin the meter back.
Yeah, what if you wanted to produce power to sell? Then, you know, you.
I don't know.
Then it becomes.
I don't think they buy it, I don't think the the grid system buys it from you anymore.
I think they do.
They do, here?
I think so.
I I think I thought Aldra Delta.
What would just be Aldra Delta though? I think the B L P does and.
Okay.
Do you have any idea about that?
I do not, no.
I think I, I think I read, I'm pretty sure I read that the B L P does.
I mean, they used to buy it back.
Well, is there any way we can pass this thing, can they? I mean, I'm 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 happy with it.
Yeah, I can live with it.
So it goes to the board next?
So the next, next step would be a public hearing.
Oh, and then to the board.
So another public hearing. And then from there, before it goes to the board.
Not on the fourteenth though.
Not the fourteenth, no. Um, and not the twenty eighth either, so we're looking at the first meeting in July.
Okay.
Actually, no, speaking with Jason today, he did say, let's do it on June twenty eighth, so. June twenty, June twenty eighth would be the suggested public hearing date. But as far as the process goes, the next step would be that public hearing, from there it gets sent, as per our ordinance, it gets sent to the county planning commission. And they have a chance to review it and comment on it if they wish, and then from there it would go to the township board. Who could also, I believe, if they wish, request a public hearing be scheduled and have their own public hearing. But again, that's an option for them, for the board.
Let's just invite him to the public hearing.
So the motion would be to schedule a public hearing for June twenty eighth?
Yep.
I don't know if that'd be the best date, but I guess if Jason wants to do it, then I think we're gonna.
Yeah, we've been, I mean, but there's, as you guys know, a lot of public hearings, a lot of things going on, so we're planning meetings out. Pretty far ahead at this point, so.
All right.
And I will look into those, the amps question. I'll obviously add the land use intensity designations to this article. And then I can, if if the planning commission wishes, I can certainly send those changes out again and the full packet of proposed changes. Uh, before that public hearing, so.
Motion?
Move to schedule a public hearing on the uh, the adoption of the solar energy system as discussed. In item seven A and all the attached documents. How about for June twenty eighth?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion and second, any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Post, all right. All right, correspondence eight A, Longyear Realty Corporation preliminary P O D supplemental update.
So we have received their, I I guess you could call it their app, their full application. Materials will be made available to the planning commission, um, and those materials include. A booklet of sorts with a narrative and their traffic impact studies and other studies they've had completed. As well as a full size set of plans, so each planning commissioner will get that booklet and a full size set for review. When, leading up to the June fourteenth meeting, and we will discuss it at the June fourteenth meeting. And then as I stated earlier in the meeting, uh, we will schedule that public hearing for June twenty eighth.
So the last time we were here, there was some mention of a appropriations request, what does that stand?
Still out.
Nothing, we heard nothing?
I mean, it's, we're kind of, with that, we're kinda at the mercy of the legislature.
But that was to be decided by the end of this month, is that correct?
I.
I thought it was an end of the month kind of thing.
What did she say?
Except for the road?
Yeah.
Well, it was, it was, it was obviously a scramble to get it all put together to submit to the legislature, but at this point, now that it lies.
Now, is that appropriations, has that already been been passed? And and these are just, are are the, the funding has it been passed and these are just decisions of making, who's gonna get the money? Or does this have to look at the legislative process through committee and all that kind of stuff? I thought the money was there and they were just applying for it.
That's how I understand it.
So then that that must have already been passed and signed by the governor, so it's a pool of money that's sitting there and somebody is gonna adjudicate who gets the money.
Correct.
I think it's COVID money.
Yeah, but we heard nothing.
So Jen.
No update.
Jen Hill, who is our representative, um, on Tuesday, June sixth at six P M is going to be, um, meeting with us virtually. So she might be the person to really ask.
Oh, is it Martin Fratanti involved?
I don't know, yeah. Yeah, if you know him, ask him.
Uh, I don't know him personally, no, I do not.
Anyways, June sixth, if you are able to come at six P M to discuss township issues, it might be.
That's here.
Right here. Right here, probably in the big room because the technology's better.
This is where you're gonna be with her virtually on June sixth?
Probably in that one.
Okay.
I don't know which one, but.
But that's the date you're gonna be talking to her?
Yes, that's probably the one, it's a Tuesday. I'm not a fan of virtual meetings or that.
Okay, uh, eight B, twenty twenty three property maintenance schedule update.
That's simply on there to state that Jason and I will be starting canvassing in earnest next week. So going up five fifty, going through Trailbridge, going down four ninety two, uh, and the rest.
Down Lake Enchantment?
Down Lake Enchantment.
Oh, boy.
Do do you want us to send you addresses?
If you've got them, yeah.
Oh my gosh, Steve and I went driving, there's some messes out there.
I would, yeah, my wife and I and daughter went.
Driving.
Went up Sugarloaf this past weekend and went by.
The drive.
Couple of those on five fifty that I know have been persistent problems throughout the years, so.
You know, I got a question to, I I don't have any desire to interfere with anybody's property rights and the way they live. But isn't, is there some kind of permit required for a junkyard? I mean, cause a couple of those places on five fifty have got like at least twenty cars.
Yes.
And whether they're a used car lot or whether they're a junkyard, I mean.
And without mentioning property owners or specific properties, um, there is one particular one on five fifty that the state has been involved with. Eagle, formerly M D E Q. Um, so there's one on there that they've been involved, the state's been involved because of the fluids and whatever else that are leaking out of those junk cars, so.
Yeah, it's our health hazards.
Do we have an ordinance for junkyards, for permitting junkyards here in the, do we have junkyards here in township? Do we have a junkyard, I mean, do we have one?
I don't.
We don't.
I don't know if I'd say we've got an ordinance for it, but I mean, it's in, not in that sheet that I handed out, but it's junkyard, it's our district.
Well, maybe we should give it a gold star for for having our first junkyard.
Yeah.
Not at all.
They charge them for a permit, just ten thousand dollars for a permit, what do we care, right?
Maybe they could just turn it into a seminary then. That's on here.
A seminary.
I I think with all the stuff though that we need to be as creative as we can to get things cleaned up. I'm still, I would rather pay for a dumpster to be put at their homes and have them use it than to continually send our staff there, do ticketing, not do anything. And it's still, Steve still has stuff on it.
But see, the thing is, to them, it's not junk. They're not looking to throw it away, they're gonna make some money on it, oh, I'm gonna fix it up, oh, I'm gonna save it, oh, I'm gonna give it to my grandkids. It's not junk, they're they're not looking for a place to throw it away, they're just collecting it there.
But I think cars without license, currently licensed cars, you can only have one or two in your yard, whatever the ordinance says. You cannot have twenty.
But somebody's gotta go out there and tell them that.
Yep.
Well, yes, I think they've been told.
Even one or two or three cars, somebody's gotta go out there and tell them.
And they have to be insured too, there's a couple roles and yes.
Maybe Jason should wear his marine outfit.
Yeah, so with any case that comes up this year outside of the case down Lake Enchantment Way. Um, since that's existing, ongoing we would call it, but any others will have to kinda go through that full process of send them a letter. Wait a couple weeks, send another letter, wait a couple weeks, send a third letter, and then after that, restart the tickets. And it's those tickets that are really what spurs action.
So let me ask you a question, so. Is this generated by our sense of what's proper or is it generated by a complaint of a neighbor?
Typically, well, obviously I just stated that we're gonna canvass, so that's not complaint based. But outside of kind of the initial canvassing at the beginning of the summer season, you could say it's complaint based.
Okay.
Obviously, when Jason and I or any other staff person are out and about going to lunch or from lunch or to or from home or going to or from a meeting, we'll keep our eyes peeled for. Problem properties, but if it's.
How how do you feel about that? How do you feel about like being the one to be the, I mean, not you, you're a representative of this body to be the arbiter of what's. Beautiful and not beautiful or ugly or?
I mean, we've got an ordinance that backs me and other staff people up, so it's really not like I'm going in there and saying. I personally find this ugly and offensive and you need to clean it up, it's, this is a violation of the ordinance and we've had complaints and so you should clean it up. Otherwise, I'm gonna take further steps.
And you're tall enough to be confident walking up on the property, right?
Yep. And at a previous job down in Grand Rapids, I did this basically full time, so I mean, it's.
You wear a hat, like a Stetson?
Yep, not a Stetson, but ball cap.
Well, I think a lot of those cars are following the business or abandoned car ordinance.
In within our property maintenance ordinance, we have language regarding junk vehicles.
Yeah.
And so we define a junk vehicle as anything that cannot readily move. On command, so you can't, if it can't get started up and drove drove forward or backward at all, then it's inoperable, anything with flat tires is inoperable. Um, properties are allowed, I think it's one or maybe two unlicensed vehicles, I'm pretty sure it's one though. So, but not to get too deep into the weeds, uh, no pun intended. With my position in Grand Rapids, if we found a junk car, people would usually come out and say, no, you can't ticket me for that. Cause the process down there was very, much more straightforward, cut and dry. Here's an inoperable vehicle with flat tires and we're gonna slap a sticker on it, if it's not moved within seven days, the police are gonna come and pound it. And so they would come up, sit, or the resident of the structure would come out and say, that's not a junk car. And our answer would be, okay, start it up and move it for me then. And if they can start it up and pull it forward five feet and reverse it five feet, case closed. But if they can't do that, then we're gonna continue enforcement, so. I mean, that's how I think I would do it up here too, how I, if they can't move the vehicle, then it's inoperable.
Makes sense. All right, eight C, twenty twenty three township construction progress van tour discussion.
Yep, so Jason and I were talking about this today, um, and we've got four proposed dates to do it. They're all off nights, as in not a Wednesday night or not a planning commission meeting night. As you can see, we've got a lot of stuff going on that it's gonna, it would be hard to squeeze in a van tour on one of those regular meeting nights. So, um, we've got proposed Thursday, June first, Monday, June fifth. Uh, Monday, June twelfth or Thursday, June twenty second. As dates that would work for both Jasons.
What was the last day of the year, Eric, I'm sorry?
The twenty second, which is a Thursday. So all, all the days in June, uh, the first, fifth, twelfth through the twenty second. Fifth and the twelfth are Mondays, and then the first and the twenty second are Thursdays.
I can't do it to twenty seventh.
Correct.
Can't do it the first.
Correct.
I can't do it that first.
So say the first is out.
Twenty seconds out.
Twenty seconds out, we're looking at Monday, the fifth or Monday, the twelfth.
I can do either one, doesn't matter.
Yep.
Same for me, either one.
Okay.
I'll let you win.
Whatever you guys wanna do.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll, we'll, I guess, keep both options open at this point, we'll check with Bethany.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See if she's got one that she can't do or both maybe, hopefully not both. Um, and we'll go from there and let everybody know.
Got time, Eric, thank you.
Um, I mean, I, just to stay consistent, I would say seven, but I don't think that's, it doesn't need to be seven, it could certainly be earlier.
Yeah, I work till five thirty after that, it's fine.
Okay. This, we would have to notice it, um, but I'm pretty sure it's only seventy two hours in advance or something like that, so. We wouldn't anticipate any public wanting to come along, but. We could call it a work session or something like that, but we do have to notice it, so.
Okay. Danny, township board report, Linda.
I don't have any report, I looked at this, the only thing we talked about was the Jen Hill meeting.
Okay.
Really, and then we talked a lot about paying bills, someone asking us to get them a raffle license.
Was that the business association?
Yeah, yeah, I'm a little confused about that, but. And, um, yeah, the Marcus Senior High School girls softball team can use our Lions field. But their season will be done soon.
If the board's not doing much then, huh?
I don't know, Jason gave a report, I didn't have to say anything, he said everything about our report, so, yeah, anyways. They talk a long time for not, yeah.
Is there any rec committee report?
I do have a rec committee report, um, they met, I think, last week, so pretty recently. They, Jason said they discussed the additional info submitted for that trust fund grant, um, so that application is in. But the grant administrator, that trust fund requested more information. I had Bethany sign those minutes last meeting, so those were submitted as well as some other things. Next step on that, assuming that they find everything favorable would be a site visit in July, so. And that's for that wellhead, trailhead project.
Can we add that to our road tour?
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yep.
And and then from a recreation perspective, from my world, um, the community day is August fifth and we're gonna have some recreation. So we're gonna have volleyball net and we're gonna have that beanbag toss thing, whatever that's called. And some bands, so you can dance.
Right.
And we'll be done by nine thirty or ten, cause it's.
Where would you hold that?
At the Lions Park.
Lions Park.
Yeah.
Where, you know, where is the Lions Park?
It's in the middle of Trailbridge.
Middle of Trailbridge.
Right by Vander Boom School.
Danny, Danny, Danny.
I'm, I'm no, I don't.
Put that on the tour too, you've not been there?
You've never been to Lions Park?
Yep.
I have to go there.
So as a side story, the Lions Club started that park, so that was my dad and his brothers.
Oh, okay.
So it's has a long history for my family.
Great, I'll be sure to go there.
Yeah, we'll go there on our tour, cause there's some junk places. Anyways, come and come and see it, we have free ice cream cones and free popcorn.
Wow.
Hand dipped ice cream from Gilbert's.
Really?
Yeah.
And then Jason also said that, oh, you're fine. The, uh, the final, and I'm drawing a blank on where the funding for this came from, whether it was a grant or what. Uh, but the final two items for the underpass, which are a bench and a kiosk, have been added by our public works department, so. Um, and then Jason did say he also has been talking with, uh, Crimmins, developers of Panera Bread and Texas Roadhouse about. Connecting that path where it comes out on the tunnel right there to those properties, uh, to make sure we have that continuous path. So, but you're doing that, you run into the snowmobile trail, and so there's a little bit more involved discussions than just getting Crimmins on board, so.
Wouldn't that be like going uphill a lot?
Oh, it's on there, on there, electric bikes, don't worry. Electric bikes and snowshoes, don't get it.
That's like about a hundred steps up there from the bottom. Wow. Okay. Roll committee report?
Uh, nothing to report, uh, our last meeting was canceled from that snowstorm and then we will meet either next week or the week after, so. I'll have an update at the next one.
Is that the township that does the sweeping of the streets or the county?
County.
They haven't been around anywhere yet.
It's, it's a. It's, it's a, it's, it's a, um, like a, you start at the top, so one year, you're at the top, the next year, you're down, then you're down, then you're down. You must be on the bottom this year.
That's how it works?
It has a, some, I forget what that would be called, but, yeah. They were sweeping the path, pedestrian pathway on U S forty-one by the flower box the other day, and water and sweeping. Cause I was at the flower box. Yeah, so I, I'm not quite sure, but we can ask the, where we are in there.
No, it's no big deal.
And the Road Commission meeting did get canceled, that the township was going to have with the Road Commission, but I will let you know when the next one is, so we can all talk to them about the services they provide.
Wowing, yes.
Wowing, yep.
Pete Dukes.
Yeah.
Planning and zoning report.
I don't really have anything additional, um, we've kind of laid out what we'll be doing these next few meetings, as far as public hearings and the business that will be conducted. Um, I mean, we're getting a lot of, kind of, smaller residential permit applications for fences and decks and garages, and then on the commercial side of things, outside of those larger projects that I think we're all aware of. Signed permit applications to reface stuff, and, sma, again, it's kind of the smaller, smaller scale permit applications, a lot of that coming in, being that it's construction season, so. I would like to backtrack a little bit back to eight C about the van tours, is there any, with Danny saying, can we go to the wellhead property, is there anything else that we would wanna see in particular? I wrote down the wellhead property, the long ear property, Lions Field, maybe a couple property, uh, problem property maintenance cases, I mean, is there anything else that comes to anybody's mind that they would wanna see on that?
Can, can we get very close to that long ear thing?
Uh, we can. As close as the road gets, and if we wanna get out, I don't see why they might wanna seek their permission to do it first, but we could get out and walk around a little bit, I don't see why not.
I, I had some discussion with Jason concerning a land division application for Panera Bread, do you know if that was ever fallen up?
Last I heard of that, um, it was with Zappa. And I can't recall if we got an opinion from him on that or not, yet, so.
Okay.
So, is, so if we go before these short-term rentals have their public hearing, it, it isn't, it may be, everyone's already driven by the short-term rental applicant's property already?
I've driven by most of them, just up.
Yeah.
One way up there on Big Bay.
Okay, so we'll probably go that way, and maybe we can just have our list then and see where they are.
If you're gonna go up five fifty, you.
You'll see it.
You'll go by this, this is your Powell's place.
Yeah, I did look at the Center Street one again, recently, so.
Can we drive by where they're gonna be putting that rock again and look at that, too?
Sure. Bring our shotguns and we'll go right to Grand Loma.
Yeah.
Oh, by the way.
It is in, it is in Powell Township, so.
Yeah, I don't think they'll have coffee for us, just don't they? Danny might have coffee for us, but I don't think they know.
I got a wine cellar. I got a well stock, stop at my house, thirty-eight Els Ness Road, take a break, the driver will get ginger ale. You think I'm kidding, I'm gonna.
No, I mean not.
You wanna have a little break?
We're gonna buy Togo's to our, our casa.
Alright.
So if, if there are any other particular locations or sites anybody wants to see, just let Jason or I know, and we can make sure it's on the itinerary.
What's the status of the Renovari, uh, situation?
Uh, they are still, as far as I know, kind of working on the financing portion, cause they're, if you recall, kind of stacking some fu, financing tools from the land bank and the state, and I, I don't remember who else off the top of my head, but.
I saw in the, a couple of the minutes somewhere, I don't even remember exactly, I mean, was it township minutes, or our minutes, or whatever, uh, that Jason drafted an agreement between the township and Renovari?
It, I assume that would be the purchase agreement that was drafted up, um, and that's been previously shared with the planning commission, but if you would wanna see that again, I could send it along.
I don't, I don't. Did we, what, did any of you guys see it? I didn't see it.
Well, I saw it.
I don't remember.
I don't see the documents for purchase agreement.
Yeah, we've never seen an actual purchase agreement.
Yeah, it was never given to us. There was a, there was a proposal from Renovari that was shared with us, but there was nothing, and there was a, uh, five oh one agreement between the city, I guess it's five oh one, between the city and, uh, the township, but other than that, we've never seen any document.
Okay, could you say an agreement drafted by Jason?
Yeah, he, it was in, uh, it's.
It's probably.
I don't remember, but yes, he drafted, he got authority from the township to draft an agreement.
Okay.
With Renovari.
Yeah.
We've never seen it, so.
I assume it's the, the purchase option agreement.
For the.
Could we, could we take a look at that?
Yep.
Could you share that with us?
Certainly.
Great.
No, I think we gave them a year.
Right.
So they have a year.
I just.
To go through the process.
Yeah, I'm not interested in, in the financial terms, I'm interested in what, if there's any qualifications, uh, conditions, or whatever, that might impact the decision of the planning commission, um, or hinder our decision-making process in the future that might be contained in that agreement. That's what I'm interested in.
Anything more with planning and zoning? Oh, you know, as long as we're gonna be on the well property, on the well road, um, maybe we could take a cruise down Von's property, too, just to see if that's coming.
Yeah, three silos, yeah.
Yeah, that's great, yeah.
Good suggestion.
Have they, have they, uh, completed that?
I heard they have sold seven lots so far.
But they built, they're all built?
They're starting, no.
Or no, just the ladders?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're starting to build the rental units now.
Okay.
They just started moving earth around today.
Uh-huh.
And, uh, but, boy, those lots are small.
For the, for the rentals?
No.
No, for the houses.
For the home.
Seventy-foot lots, and they have a twenty-five-foot setback, or fifty on one side and ten on the other, so you can only put a forty-five-foot white house on there. Not very big.
That's probably what you're looking at. Longer development, too.
No. Anybody see, uh, I don't know, maybe you know Eric, what's going in, um, by Econo, up on top of that hill, they're like moving a whole bunch of earth around today, and digging, and.
Is that a, a hotel, is that the other hotel, the city of Prue?
No, not that I know of, I mean, it could be, but I don't know what it was, I haven't heard anything.
Is that in township?
Right across from Jeffries, no.
It's in the city, but.
I think, I think that is a.
Oh, that's, that's, yeah, that's city, and that's a Prue, or.
The Best Western?
I think a Best Western hotel.
Yeah.
Really, a hotel?
Yeah.
Wow.
And then one downtown on the water.
Yeah, I knew about that.
And the one that's going into the old dry cleaners.
Yeah.
The old dry cleaners?
Yeah, right on, right on.
There you go.
Oh, that's a boutiquey kind of, yeah.
That would be very big.
They got no space to park.
Oh, yeah, probably not, you have to pay to park.
They're trying to find parking.
I think they're gonna need, they'll need parking for a hotel, they'll need a, I think it's a s, one spot for each room, if I remember right, so they're gonna need parking to open up.
That's the little boutiquey thing, I think it's not very many units, uh, uh, I, I.
No, but even if it's ten.
I know someone, we know someone we can ask.
Yeah.
Charlie, it's Charlie. I wanna go see it before they open.
You sure, buying up a lot of things, or?
Well, you're, you're sitting on the wrong board for that.
Go see him? No, I have another thing. No, 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 you have to use all your avenues, right, Jim?
Yep.
Okay. Anyone have any announcements? No one here for public comment? And we'll see if anyone has any additional comments here by planning commissioners. Steven?
Nope, I'm good, I'm good.
Linda?
I already did my community thing.
Okay, I can't think of anything either, so.
Oh, did you guys read this? Better plans, fewer stands, it was in our, um, Michigan Planner, it's about planning, Danny, did you, did you see it?
I get the Michigan Planner.
Fewer stands?
Yeah, it's about development, division, buildings that are noticing, maybe you already saw it.
Jason and I saw that and have discussed it, um. I can certainly make copies of it and send it out, I mean, I, the, the point that really stuck out to me is that they talk about the public noticing requirements of basically any project, and they, and they talk about it in regards to housing. But the public noticing requirements, you notify property owners, and so you basically are inviting, just by default, the people that are going to oppose.
Oh, yeah, I read that, Eric.
That are going to oppose any higher density develop, developments, so you're not, you're not get, you're not hitting the renters in the community, and the other people in the community that are not property owners. Um, so, it just, again, it kind of makes that point.
They talk about better, uh, better outreach.
Right.
To get the people that are actually in benefit and support, yeah.
Yep.
So I guess, I guess I do have one comment then, because I, I think the short-term rental thing, um, needs to be relooked at. I know the person in his application is supportive, and he wrote, um, that he felt short-term rentals were better for the community than long-term rentals. But we don't have enough housing for the people who live here today, and short-term rentals are not housing for people who have jobs in our community.
Well, forty, there's gonna be forty-eight units for the Renovari, twenty-four of them are gonna be divided into the small studios and one bedrooms that are gonna be selling for a hundred, two hundred thousand apiece, so.
But we have a lot more people than that that need housing.
Let's start with that, we control that, we control that piece of property.
Anyways, I still, I still think we need to think about how many short-term rentals.
Yeah, you're right.
I bet, uh, three servers had to quit and leave because they couldn't find apartments for the summer.
Yeah, and Northerns even renting, um, dorms, I think, to students, so there's no, yeah, you can't af, you can't afford on a salary of, the majority of our young people make in this community, a fifteen hundred dollar apartment.
What, what they're doing now, too, is with these three and four-bedroom apartment houses, they're just renting bedrooms out to people, you rent a bedroom now for five hundred bucks a month, and then.
A shared space.
Yeah.
Yeah, our employee of our group is just renting a bedroom.
Yeah.
Those have got, in a house with.
I have a five-bedroom house, I could rent some of those. Oh, my gosh.
Six hundred bucks a bedroom, that's not bad.
Well, it's sad to think that.
It is, it's a sad situation, but it's not just here.
No, it's sad, it's everywhere.
Yeah.
Came at the right time, Eric, then your family's like, that's all.
Okay, meeting adjourned.
It was in the Casa, couple weeks ago, looking for you, but you were not here Friday night.
Uh, yeah. I saw your credit cards.
Tina.
Saw your credit.
I saw your credit card, I'm done.
Good box, dude.
I have to go through all their credit cards.
Oh, did you, did you, oh, you saw AB's then.
We have to check the server.